built their lives in the U.S., giving Hollywood and the world incredible music in the process.
So we're here today to celebrate Jewish American Heritage Month, which celebrates the entire volume and diversity of the Jewish community and their contributions to America. And particularly, JAM, Jewish American Heritage Los Angeles celebrates the contributions of Jewish Angelinos. And that's why the theme this year was about composers who, in fleeing oppression in Europe under Nazi Germany, came to America and built a new life. And in building a new life, they actually built the most iconic songs in Hollywood.
One of the things that I want people to take away from the event is that our contributions are everywhere, from law and medicine and culture and food and all sorts of different ways, you know? And this is just one example of it. Through the music that's in musicals and film, but all the different ways that one can contribute to civil society, Jews are there and participating and engaging and leading. Just want to honor and recognize that and lift that up to the end.
The great thing about living in L.A. is it's such a beautiful melting pot. We're lucky to live in a city that's very multicultural. And it's important for every community to understand everyone's story and be able to actually celebrate their story, to be able to celebrate Jewish heritage, especially they brought in the idea of composers and people in Hollywood. And to be able to show and introduce that a lot of people don't know the history of musicians that happen to be Jewish that have played such an important role in our culture and, you know, in life.
So I think that the standout point is something that was built into the mission of Los Angeles JAM, which was to be inclusive of everybody, not just to have Jewish community support ourselves. And so I think seeing so many of the council members who are not members of the Jewish people standing up and saying, "We salute our Jewish brothers and sisters, and we see your resilience, and we know you're going through a hard time right now," and then to bring the joy into it. For me, I actually got a little emotional and teared up because of that, because a lot of people in the Jewish community, like many other marginalized communities, are really feeling a lot of hate right now. And to see L.A. City come together, I just thought, this is what Los Angeles is about. This is what JAM A-Lay is about.
Summer increases heat stroke danger for children. An update on debris removal in the Palisades. And a heart attack survivor reunites with L.A. City firefighters. These stories up next on City Beat.
With summer months ahead, L.A. City Community Investment for Families Department, CI-FD, is reminding Angelinos about the dangers of leaving children unattended in hot cars. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, 39 children died of heat stroke in vehicles in 2024, a rise of 35% from the previous year. Common ways that heat stroke can occur include a child forgotten in the backseat and a child gaining access to a car on their own. Families can take action to prevent child heat stroke by remembering to look before you lock and keeping keys securely away from children's reach. For more information, visit communityinvestment.lacity.gov. Mayor Karen Bass announced that almost 2,000 properties have been cleared by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, amounting to nearly 900,000 tons of debris removed from the Palisades area. To date, 54 permits related to rebuilding efforts have been issued for 40 addresses. The first permit was issued 57 days after the start of the Palisades wildfire, and hundreds of applications are in process. According to Bass, recovery efforts are on track to be the fastest in California history, with utilities restored in record time, including relief and protections for wildfire survivors. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press. At a recent commission meeting, the Los Angeles Fire Department held a presentation for city firefighters, 911 operators, and medics whose swift action saved a woman's life. In October 2024, the patient's daughter witnessed the 81-year-old's collapse at home, called 911, and immediately began CPR under the guidance of an L.A. Fire Department dispatcher. Firefighters arrived quickly and began advanced life support, including the use of the Lucas Device, which performs mechanical chest compressions. The woman was reunited with fire department personnel and medical staff, whose coordinated emergency response led to her full recovery from sudden cardiac arrest. For more information, visit lafd.org/news.
Firehouses across the city opened in celebration of Fire Service Day. The annual event gives community members a chance to peek inside, learn more about their firefighter teams, and thank them for all they do.
Today is Fire Service Day. The communities get together, fire stations open up their doors so people can get to know their firefighters. The amount of people that come out here is outstanding. To their firefighters, this is a day for them to get to know their firefighters. They get to take a tour of the fire station, they get to know their community, and it's just a great day that they have here.
For a lot of people, it's an opportunity to come and say thank you to the firefighters. But in reality, it's an opportunity for us, as your fire department, to say thank you to our community for all your support.
Ask a firefighter what it is we do. We can sit down and we can explain it to you. We could actually get hands-on tools and show you what we're doing. And all those things that you have a question about, what happens in a firehouse and how we respond to calls, will be answered for you today.
We have opportunities in every single fire station with various activities. Some are having pancake breakfasts, some are having demonstrations.
A twofold accomplishment here today. We get to thank our local firefighters for all of their great service, and it's also an opportunity to raise money for the beautiful community of Trulica Lake.
It's like a fair, but a community fair. I tell the people it's a time they can come by and tell the fire department, thank you personally. You know, like you say, hug a fireman, come by and talk to the firemen. They love to hear from you. So that's why I'm here.
This guy right here has been a huge supporter of our program, and we're very grateful to have him come by on Fire Service Day. It happens around the same time every year, May. Take a look at social media pages. All the stations have banners out in front that advertise the date of when it is. And of course, we encourage everyone to come out and meet your firefighters.
Councilmember Imelda Padilla hosted a resource fair for the neighborhood. At this family event, community members could enjoy the park, connect with therapy animals, and take a deep breath. It was all a part of Mental Health Awareness Month in Arlita.
Today, Council District 6 is in the beautiful community of Arlita at Branford Park. I'm excited to be here. I'm super happy rocking my Branford Park sweater. This is a family event. We're excited to be here because what we're talking to the families about is that May is Mental Health Awareness Month.
I think that mental health gets overlooked in a lot of communities like this one, so I'm glad that we can be a resource for them to come out and find resources or even just have a day to themselves, to think about their mental health and work on themselves a little bit.
It's a huge event. There's a lot of participants here. I think it's very important, you know, to keep going, to try your very best, and to stay positive.
We want to make sure that we provided an opportunity where we talk to folks about the importance of reading, the importance of staying fit and physical, and also the importance of being out in nature, surrounding yourself with animals, therapeutic animals, all of these different components of a lifestyle related to improving our mental health. That's what we put together here.
Don't be afraid to come out and see what's going on in your community. We're really here to work for you. We're public servants here at the rec center, here at the council office, so we want to put these things on to help you. So please come out, please ask questions, we're happy to serve.
To learn more about what we're up to in CD6, you can follow us on social media at CD6LosAngeles or our website to learn a lot more about what's going on in CD6.
The reflective environment of Magrory Arts Center is perfect for nurturing creativity. Participants at a recent hands-on workshop contemplated memories and traditions as they crafted old items in a new way, creating their own memory jars.
Well, today here at Magrory Arts Center, we're running a workshop on making your own memory jar. It's an old, old craft that came long ago from Africa, but was practiced by families and a lot of Victorians thought it was a really good thing to do. If you had nothing to do, that was a problem, so you should find old things and make a memory jar.
I loved learning the history of these memory jars, and I love just making something. It's been a while since I've created something really by hand and feeling the clay and all of that. It's been really fun.
I came because I know the importance of art and the healing that it creates for us. It's important for us to sit with our emotions and with our friends and share these special moments because it creates an internal happiness and joy.
One of the things about a memory jar is sometimes we're remembering our own past, not just maybe that of a loved one. Sometimes we're remembering our connection with another person, and we might even do the activity with another person.
I love making crafts, and I was looking for something fun to do with my mom together. And we just thought it sounded really fun to build something with our hands and create something.
In my personal case, it was my great-grandfather and grandmother who did it together as a New Year's Eve celebration of their love. You don't really have a place to put them, so you take these objects and you put them together on a jar. Could be a ceramic jar using putty.
So I brought some shells that I had picked up in Hawaii on a family trip we took. It was meaningful to me because my sister passed away, and I took this trip with my sister. It was meaningful to put them to use in another way and think of her memory while I'm making this.
We have these oak trees that have a life of their own, and so when you come here, it's very peaceful, calming. It's a wonderful opportunity to take time for yourself. The environment itself is very healing, healing.
L.A. City's Department of Recreation and Parks has a wide variety of activities across the city. At Pan Pacific Park, a yoga and sound bath class is proving helpful for the senior community, keeping them strong and balanced.
We are at the Pan Pacific Senior Center, and we just took a chair yoga and sound bath class with Tisha Smith.
I just taught a yoga and sound bath class for seniors, and it was chair mobility. So we worked on strength and balance, a little bit of light stretching, meditation, sound healing, and then a little bit of community cultivation. So I love when people come in and they tell me, "I've got bad knees, I've got a bad back, or I can't meditate," and then walking them through the process and helping them find more alchemy in their body and relieve a lot of tension and pain, especially for seniors with having like arthritis and different illnesses. So I love being able to show people that they are capable.
I'm retired, and I wanted things to do, to move and to keep me involved in the world. It was very interesting because when we first took the class, when we first came in with Tisha, basically what she does is we meditate first, and then we do chair yoga, and then we do sound bath, and then she has these cards that are sort of affirmation cards that we read and discuss, and it's kind of a little bit of group therapy, actually.
We close the session with reflection cards. So each person has a different prompt, and we share vulnerably about things we're going through in life or where we are. And everyone has some type of gem that they like to share, and it kind of opens up a space where people feel more comfortable. So I like to do that because I like to connect with the people that I work with and learn about them, and then I feel like we all have something to learn from each other when we do that. I think that having the city's support and having spaces like this where people can come, it makes it easily accessible for everyone, and they make sure that they keep it price affordable. A lot of seniors have fixed budgets, and even just people in the community might not have access to pay what you would pay at studios or other places for these types of classes. So I think that they're very intentional with creating a space where people can return and to come back.
I think it's a fabulous class. I mean, for people that are watching this, I can't say enough about how good it is, particularly for seniors. You know, there's a sense of isolation sometimes, and it's like an overall kind of class. I mean, it stimulates you intellectually and mentally and physically and socially. So I think it's great.
In this week's Feature Story, we continue our series on the Department of Cultural Affairs Neighborhood Arts Centers, focusing on the Barnes-Dahl Junior Arts Center. The many arts programs here are dedicated to young Angelinos from the age of two up to 17 years.
You know, most people don't realize when they come to the Barnes-Dahl Art Park that we have our Barnes-Dahl Art Center and our Barnes-Dahl Junior Art Center. The Barnes-Dahl Art Center offers many arts classes in different disciplines for adults through our Barnes-Dahl Art Center. The Barnes-Dahl Junior Art Center is for children and youth specifically.
Barnes-Dahl Junior Arts Center is a kids' art program. We provide all different kinds of art programs for the kids aged two years old all the way to 17 years old. Barnes-Dahl Junior Arts Center was opened in 1967, and Barnes-Dahl Arts Center actually started earlier than B.J.A.C. in 1946.
The Barnes-Dahl Art Center and the Barnes-Dahl Junior Art Center are your centers. As a part of the city of Los Angeles, we make our facilities as accessible as possible. We have about 75 classes annually.
We are known as a pioneer program for the film and animation in the '70 because we do have a connection to the Hollywood because of where we are located. So former student like Gregory Pack and Leonardo DiCaprio was a former student. That was kind of awesome when I found out about our history. I believe our center is supposed to provide safe place for all community, all ages, all races. We had a handicap art program since we opened in the '60s. They should be able to come and connect through art-making. That brings the healing. We're nurturing the human connection.
We're actually very excited at the Department of Cultural Affairs to not only have the Barnes-Dahl Art Center, the Barnes-Dahl Junior Art Center, but also to have a gallery space for all of the children and youth to display their works. We're very proud of that.
We just launching a new website, barnsdahlarts.lacity.gov. I'm super excited. You could find us all the information there.
In this week's Things to Do, celebrate World Ocean Day with science and Pokémon. Head to a new dog park and playground in the San Fernando Valley. And hear political cartoonist David G. Brown talk about his work. All this up next on Things to Do.
To celebrate World Ocean Day, Cabrillo Marine Aquarium is hosting a fun and educational event inspired by the world of Pokémon. Explore the science of water-type Pokémon and learn how many were inspired by real marine animals found in SoCal. There will be ocean-themed science connections, a scavenger hunt, fun photo cutouts, and Pokémon-style cards to collect. This event ties into the Global Pokémon Go World Ocean Day and includes a beach cleanup at Cabrillo. Celebrate the ocean, marine science, and Pokémon on Saturday, June 7th, from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. For more information, visit cabriomarineaquarium.org. On Saturday, June 7th, join Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez and L.A. City Sanitation and Environment for the grand opening of Lopez Canyon Green Space Playground and Dog Park. This event will unveil the first dog park in the northeast San Fernando Valley, along with two brand-new playgrounds, exercise machines, picnic benches, three rain gardens, and much more. It's going to be a fun-filled day with food trucks on site, head adoptions taking place, and community gathering. Head to Silmar for the grand opening of Lopez Canyon Green Space on Saturday, June 7th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, visit c7.lacity.gov/events. L.A. City's Department of Cultural Affairs invites you to Watts Towers to enjoy the exhibition, Politics, Race, and Cartoons: Two Decades of Drawing My Own Conclusions. The show curated by Rosalie Hooks raises questions about the social power of art while celebrating the work of L.A. Sentinel political cartoonist David G. Brown. On Sunday, June 8th, Brown will give a talk about his work and his artistic career, which brought him to L.A. in the 1980s. Head to the Purifoy Gallery at Watts Towers for David G. Brown Artist Talk on Sunday, June 8th at 1:00 p.m. For more information, visit culture.lacity.gov/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Susan Huckle, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. We're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
What does it take to move a mountain? That no one wants to climb? When they tell you there's no answer? How do you change the heart and mind? Can you face the road to freedom? When the past is in your way? In the darkness of the night, the future may be hard to find. But I believe that there's a day. All it takes is one good thing. All we need is one good thing. And I will find one good thing. Cause all it takes is one good thing. And all we need is one good thing. Do you believe in what you see? Or do you dream of what could be? Cause I believe in you and me.
[music]
Says we have 11, so good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, the third day of June in the year 2025. My name is Marquis Harris Dawson, and I'm serving as Chair of this meeting. Public comment for this morning's meeting will be taken in this chamber in person. Madam Clerk, begin by calling the roll.
Yes, sir. Bloomingfield, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Gerardo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Hart, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, 11 members present in court, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes, the May 30th, 2025.
All right, Councilmember Rodriguez moves. Councilmember McCosker seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Price moves. Councilmember Hernandez seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. It's time for the flag salute.
All right, I'll ask everyone in the chambers to rise, face the flag, and join Councilmember Rodriguez in the recitation of our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. If everyone would please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we can run through the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Items one through three are items noted for public hearing. Note that the final ordinance is associated with street lighting assessment districts. Council files 24 dash zero 900, S 75, S 76, and 25 dash zero 900, S 1 through S 6, that were previously noted for today's notice for today's council meeting will be scheduled for the Tuesday, June 10th, 2025 council meeting. Items four through 11 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 12 through 21 are items which public hearings have not been held. Note that item 18 is the mayor's veto message. No action should be taken at this time, as much as the budget is still pending at the mayor's office. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those items are before us. Are there any specials members on the left side? Any specials? Councilmember Hudado.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to call item 13 special for a separate vote.
All right, any others on that side? All right, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Five and 21 for questions, please.
Five and 21 for questions. Councilmember Price.
Mr. President, out of abundance of caution, I'm recusing myself from item five because my wife's employer has worked with an organization on this item in the past.
All right, item number five, recusal for Councilmember Price. Any other specials members? All right, seeing none, which items are available for us to vote on at this time?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items... on items four and six through 11, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next, council may vote on item five.
All right, we have a recusal and a question on five. Soon as Mr. Price is gone, we'll call on Councilmember Rodriguez. Yes. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Hold on one second. So I was, I'm guessing if maybe the... either the C A O.'s office was here to answer questions?
Do we have a representative of the C A O.'s office to address item number five in our presence? We do not. If it's okay with you, we can hold this until after public comment and try to get someone here.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, what's next?
Next is public comment, sir.
All right, City Attorney, Madam Clerk, if we can prepare for public comment.
To people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda are items one through three and items 12 through 21. So again, the items that are open for public comment on the agenda are items one through three and items 12 through 21. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. Have a couple more announcements. If I can have the interpreters, please make this first one aloud to the room, please. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret. Don't worry, we will hold your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you. One final announcement before we begin. So the order in which we take public comment is at random. It is randomly generated. So I would ask, in order to help us accommodate as many people as possible during the time for public comment, that you please wait until you hear the name that you signed up under called out and read aloud until you line up. So after you hear the name read aloud, you can line up in any order on your left-hand side of the council chambers. If for some reason you are unable to provide public comment, either because we run out of time or because you run out of time in your individual public comment, and you would like to provide additional comments, you can always do so in writing at L A council comment dot com. Again, that is L A council comment dot com. You can find that URL at the top of every council agenda. You can also do a quick Google search, and it should be one of the first things, if not the first thing that pops up. Thank you.
All right, before we call names, I want to call on Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to do this. I just wanted to do a brief introduction and welcome to the Leadership Academy for Council District 12. These young men and women, if you mind standing up, waving to the TV. These young men and women are the brightest and brightest in our council district and are learning a little bit about leadership qualities and also a little bit more about municipal government. And this is their annual trip to City Hall, and I just want to say thank you for being a part of the academy and enjoy council today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lee, and thank you all for being here. We appreciate you and look forward to seeing you in the future. All right, let's begin by calling names. Members and the public, we have about 40-some-odd people on the queue to speak. We will hold the line at that, and we will take public comment till about... It's 10:20 now, so till about 11:20 this morning.
I will now call names to come up and speak. Annabelle Ramos, Paul Murchy, Tiffany Wright.
Good morning, and which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, sir. I'm making a general comment.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
All right. Excuse me. My name is Paul Murchy, and I am a former emergency-appointed paramedic. One of the five medics abruptly terminated mid-shift last week. We were promised three years of service and let go after one despite clean records, strong performance, and critical contributions, including transporting injured L A F D firefighters from structured fires. The decision came as the city faces historic paramedic shortage. Your choice to cut experienced medics without a replacement in plan has only deepened that crisis. Our fire department leadership carried out the order begrudgingly with remorse, and although I can't see the full picture from where I stand, this looks reckless and dangerous. In the past, E A Ps were extended indefinitely, even given past the full-time roles. Today, that support is gone. Every member of this council has anywhere between two and eight paramedic vacancies within their district, and it's only the people of Los Angeles that will pay the price for this. Thank you.
I'd like to call up more names. Jonas Seida, Eldon Campbell, Derek Shaughnessy.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. My name is Tiffany Wright. I am giving general public comment this morning.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you, council representatives and attendees to this meeting for hearing me out today. My name is Tiffany Wright. For 17 years, I've devoted my life to the cannabis industry as a community organizer, activist, social equity mentor, and business operator supporting licensed businesses in the city of L.A. I'm here to make an impassioned plea that we desperately need tax relief. The current tax and fee structure is unsustainable and is driving well-meaning, honest, marginalized people into debt. People are losing their homes, their health, and even their lives to this predatory tax structure. We desperately need leadership on this issue, and we need it now. I can't believe that the city of Los Angeles would want to be complicit in being a predator to the most marginalized operators in the city. So we need you to take some leadership on this issue. We need you to reduce the taxes to 1% or less in consistent practice with alcohol and tobacco taxation. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Hello, I'm Annabelle Ramos, and I'm going to make a general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm a student at Granada Hills Charter High School, and I'm here today as a part of Councilmember John Lee's Youth Council Program, which has given me the opportunity to better understand local government and the role young people can play in shaping our communities. I hope to pursue a future in health care where I can continue serving others, especially the underserved community who is often overlooked. And being part of this council has shown me that leadership doesn't have to wait, and change can start now with the help of others. Thank you, Councilmember John Lee and Ron Rubin, for supporting young voices and giving us the chance to grow, lead, and contribute to society. Thank you.
I'll call up more names. Shamika Foster, Krish Sodi, George Herod.
Good morning.
General comment?
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Jonas Seida, and I'm a sophomore at Chatsworth Charter High School and a proud member of Councilmember John Lee's Leadership and Excellence Program. I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity Mr. Lee's office has given me to learn about local government and how young people can create real change in their communities. Too often, youth feel like their voices don't matter, but programs like this prove otherwise. They show us how to get involved, speak up, and take action. I hope the council will continue to support and expand opportunities like this across the city so more students can engage, learn, and lead. Thank you for your time and for believing in the next generation. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I signed up as Eldon Campbell for the record, and I would like to speak on all items in general.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead. Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Item number thirty, uh, thirteen is on forty-one eighteen, and as you, as you all know, Mayor Karen Bass has been sitting, lying, and sleeping on charter reform for the last eight months. And now she's gone from trying to kill the commission to trying to hijack it. Um, I, I do find some relief in knowing that a year and a half from now Karen will have all the time she wants to sit, lie, and sleep. Item one is about weed abatement, and groat, I need you to help me with something. Why is it that our mayor thinks she can assert power reserved for our charter reform commission? Um, this doesn't require getting into the legal weeds, but this council asked the city attorney to draft a law saying that we have a two-step process. The charter commission launches the application process. That was passed by this council, that was signed by the mayor, and now she wants to say that actually she had the authority to launch that application in March, and we don't need to have an open process now, and that we should just use her five people from her little select pool. That's it! She's intruding on all your power. You passed that fucking law! Moving on to the budget, I, I wonder why we're spending money on this thing if we're just going to make it a, a, a big old joke. Let's look at our seven current commissioners. Just two of them are from the Valley. I'm sure Bob will make sure we get that up to three when he gets his and whenever that happens. Only two of them out of the seven are Latino in the city of Los Angeles. We have no Asian-American representation, no Armenian representation. We're going to talk about the Port of L.A., Mr. McCosker, but we got nobody from the Harbor Communities on that commission. Now, we got five more picks to make, but this is even more complicated because out of those seven commissioners we have right now, three of them live in Isabel Gerardo's district. So this is going to be tough. We got to go through these applications and balance for the diversity of this city. But we got maybe eighty applications, no idea how many of them are valid. Keep in mind that the county had an application process for their Reform Task Force at the same time, and they got four hundred applications, five times as many as Karen Bass did. She's appointed the majority of these commissioners. She has ignored the law y'all passed and said, hey...
Speaker, I believe you've exhausted your one minute on item eighteen.
Send me, send me to general, please.
Okay, you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
You passed a law saying we don't want to do what we did with the Fed tapes, with redistricting. You can't just pull a commissioner willy-nilly. You have to go to the council to get your removal approved. And what did Karen Bass do? She said, "You're all going to have to sign undated letters of termination." So she's got a majority of the commissioners, they're all wrapped up around a leash, and we're only going to use her select pool. I hope you go reach out to your friend Justin Ramirez, who just confirmed to this commission, and tell him to open up that application process right now. Because the commission is not going to meet for a bit, so their, their, their hands are tied. So this comes down to you. I do wonder where this council's backbone has gone. Are you all that scared of the council president that you can't fight for your constituents, for your own power, for this collective body? I will say, Nury Martinez would be very, very proud of our council president. And as you teach us, it can always get worse. That cuts both ways for you.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker. Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
All right, good morning. Uh, item number one, uh, I need some, uh, extra vinegar on the side. Item number one. Item number two, special, uh, extra soy sauce on item number two. Item number three, no spicy sauce on the side. Item number three.
General public comment?
Thank you very much, uh, city attorney, that, uh, I am aware that our city attorney trying to put certain words as illegal, and then I just want to inform the whole city that councilmember Spindler is putting his life on the line to defending your First Amendment. Councilmember Spindler is putting his life on the line to define, to defend your Second Amendment. So if there's anyone in smoking scan living in C D District One, so please vote for councilmember Spindler, because there's nobody defending your First Amendment rights. Nobody will telling you that this word is illegal, that word is illegal. You cannot say this sentence, you cannot say that word other than, uh, councilmember, uh, Spindler will defend your First Amendment. Together, me, Mr. Herman, Audit L.A., all of us combined together putting our life on the line to secure your rights to freedom of speech. So to secure your rights of First and Second Amendment, vote for Spindler, C D One, twenty-twenty-six.
Speaker, your time has expired, and before the next speaker begins, um, just in an announcement, I see we have a lot of new people here, um, and a lot of confused looks. So I will extend the same offer that we do to this regular attendee, the previous speaker, um, as we always do, which is, speaker, if you would like a foreign language interpreter, you are more than welcome to request one at least forty-one, forty-eight hours in advance, and we will do our best to accommodate that. For members of the public who are looking confused, um, this is not an uncommon occurrence. Uh, the people are allowed to provide their public comment in many different ways, including in foreign languages. Uh, this speaker has not, which is his right, requested a, an interpreter. So we appreciate your patience. I promise you that it can get much worse. Good morning, speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'll be making a general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Krish Sodi, and I'm a student at Sharmar Culture Repertory and a proud participant in councilmember John Lee's Leadership Program. This program has shown what it's possible when youth are given a voice. Through the Leadership Program, I have gained firsthand experience in civil engagement, leadership, and public service. But I know I am one of the lucky ones. I have friends in other parts of Los Angeles who are just as passionate, just as driven, but they haven't had success in access to the same programs and opportunities. They are asking for internships, mentorships, and a real chance to be involved in city government. Let's take a, let's take what's working in C D Twelve and expand it citywide. Fund youth advisory boards in every district, support paid internships, and make civic, civic leadership more accessible for all students. When we invest in the youth, we are building a stronger Los Angeles for everyone. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I'd like to call up more names. Corey Patterson, Jerome G., Christopher Martinez.
Good morning, speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Shamika. I'm an organizer with L A Can. I am also a resident in Skid Row, the C D fourteen area. Um, I am here standing in solidarity with tenants from one of the seventeen buildings to submit this urgent letter regarding conditions in, in the buildings. Our demands today are immediate onsite lawful mail delivery for all fifteen occupied buildings. No more excuses. Restoration of twenty-four-seven security, not armed thugs, not intimidation, but real tenant protection, protective presence across the H A L A portfolio. And again, I would like to submit these letters to council. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Who, whose city is this?
Good morning, sir. Which items would you like to speak to?
Housing is a human right. Good morning, city council. My name is Mr. Pancake. I'm international. I am a L A Can housing organizer, native Angelino. I know many of you city council members. First of all, housing is a human right. By law, tenants have a right to safe sanitary habitable conditions. I stand in support of all tenants residing in Leo Puskansky's buildings. I know many of them and have seen conditions in some of the buildings. One tenant I know was assaulted in her building six o'clock in the morning for a lack of security in her building. City, we got to get it right. Housing is a human right. Can I get a right on?
Next speaker.
I'll call up more people. Diane Z., Punit Cowor.
Good morning. My name is Corey Patterson. I'm a general public comment.
Mr. Pat, hold on just a second. We're going to read a couple more names. Your time has not started. Don't worry. Sorry, go ahead. Can you restart with the names that you read?
I'll call them one more time, yes. Uh, Diane Z., Punit Cowor, Madison Shockley.
Good morning, Mr. Patterson. Which items would you like to speak to?
Just general public comments. So my name is Corey Patterson. I'd like to speak on, uh, the conditions. First of all, I'm an L A Can member, a Skid Row resident, a C D fourteen constituent. Uh, and I'm here to, to, uh, like Mr. Pancake said, inform you guys about some of the conditions in our buildings. I live in the Lincoln Hotel Building. We still remain without any kind of lock mechanism on our front door. Uh, our front door is deadbolted. I'd like L A F D to come out and, uh, let us have more fire exits. Uh, and I'd still like a locking individual mailbox from the owner. We, we have never had in the history of the Lincoln any individual locking mailboxes, and this is a California nineteen forty-one dot one. It's our habitability. We need some support. We're working with the right people, but we need this fixed in many of the buildings, so we're going to keep coming until it's done. And those are the two items we'd like to start today. Thank you.
Good morning, speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comments.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Uh, good morning. My name is Christopher Martinez. Um, I'm a social equity cannabis operator. Uh, wasn't able to make it to the operations committee here and on time to make public comments, but I did want to thank, uh, councilmember Padilla and Gerardo for their work that they're doing with the, with the social equity operators and cannabis overall. Um, we appreciate you listening and hearing to it, hearing us out, and, um, I know there's a lot of more work to do. I keep on hearing that the D C R is a cost recovery, um, department, uh, but some of the costs just do, don't make sense at all. I, I had to apply for a D B A for my business. It cost me thirty dollars to do it with the county. To change it with the D C R, it's costing me over five hundred dol, five hundred dollars, which makes no sense. Another issue is taxes. Uh, San Francisco currently has a one-point-five percent tax on anyone generating up to, or grossing a million dollars, and a five percent tax on anyone generating over, uh, that one million dollars. Uh, that could be easily resembled here in Los Angeles. Um, thank you for your time.
Before the next person speaks, I'd like to call up more names. Ernie Marini, uh, General Dogon, Angela Birdsong.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, just general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Madison Shockley, social equity entrepreneur and retail owner in C D Nine, also a resident of C D Ten. Um, there is a motion that has been circulating, uh, authored by councilmember Price. It is called the Social Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Motion. Uh, I want to thank councilwoman, woman Amelda Padilla for the hard work she's been doing to address the problems with the social equity program and the cannabis industry in general. I invite the rest of the council to please pay more attention to this issue. Uh, this motion does a lot of the work for you. Uh, it addresses the taxes and lowering the taxes so we can compete with the illicit market. It addresses extending the social equity program to twenty-thirty-one to match the state uh, so that we can continue on our provisional licenses as we transition to annual. Uh, it addresses many other problems. Please look at this motion and consider it, uh, and bring it up as soon as possible. Council president, please agendize this.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, my name's Adam from L A Can. I'd like to speak on general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Um, I'm here with L A Can members and tenants from across the Hope for an Affordable L A, formerly Skid Row Housing Trust Building Portfolio, to submit a letter that you already have from these and more tenants. While we know that there are myriad issues in these buildings, including mold, cockroaches, and bedbugs, non-working locks, locked fire doors, non-working fire suppression systems, and much more, this letter touches on two incredibly urgent ones: a lack of security since the new landlord took over these buildings, signed off by the city of Los Angeles, and a lack of access to mail, a violation of state and federal law. In the letter and in testimony today, you'll hear from tenants who have been forced to live in unsafe conditions with responsibility falling on not just the landlord, but the housing department, Hackla, and the city, who signed off on the sale of these seventeen buildings for just over eight thousand dollars per unit. The demands immediate onsite lawful mail delivery for, for all fifteen occupied buildings, and two, restoration of twenty-four-seven security, not armed thugs, not intimidation, but real tenant protective presence across the portfolio. Please listen to the tenants today.
Next speaker. I believe we're going to go... Next speaker.
I'd like to call up more names. Rob Kwan, Daniel Souza, Amritra Kumar.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to? And before you begin, you can move the microphone if you'd like.
Right there?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Diane Z. Diane Z. I live at the Produce as of twenty-ten. I hereby today with other tenants from one of the seventeen buildings re, recently purchased by Hope for an affordable L A, submit a letter regarding to conditions of the building. We haven't received our mail as of January. And I also would like to say immediate onsite lawful mail delivery for fifteen occupants in the building. No more excuses. Restoration of twenty-four security, not armed thugs, not imitation, but real tenant protective presence across the H A L A portfolio. Um, I also, I would also like to say I was attacked in twenty-seventeen. I have a picture, but I know I don't have time to show it, where, uh, one of the people that came in without, uh, permission to come into the building, but I do have a picture. He had hit me with his hand, and I have the bruise. That was in twenty-seventeen, and nothing has been done about it.
Next speaker. Good morning, speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, all items and general public comment, please.
There's three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Daniel Gust dot substack dot com, the Los Angeles Press Club's online journalist of the year a year ago. Uh, item number eighteen, you have a very serious problem. The L A City Clerk's Office acknowledged it had misinformation on its website about when meetings are held and where they're... about when meetings are held and where they're held. Your entire meeting from last Friday where you voted on the mayor's budget, that's gonna be a do-over, because I have it in writing from Jaws Way in the Clerk's Office that misinformation was on the website. I'm submitting a cure and correct. So item 18's gonna be moot, and your entire Friday discussion is going to be mute unless you want to get the city sued by DanielGust.substack.com. Don't challenge me on that. 21, Lhasa, wait a minute. Four women and no men? Well, where's the equity there? You have four women on the panel in item number 21? So shove all your stuff about equal opportunity. You have the entire panel. So far, four women, no men, and you want to put another woman on it? So that's how it goes in Los Angeles. Item number 16, that building has been vacant for about 20 years since I lived at the foothills of Runyon Canyon. Why now in 2025? You know how much that property is worth? Why not take that and pay down some of the debt? Not that it's not a noble item, but really, you're going to the foothills of the Hollywood Hills to build that place? Item number 14, the Juneteenth celebration. How confident, raise your hands, show of hands, how confident are you that Mr. Price doesn't have a conflict of interest right now? Because rumor has it that there's new evidence coming from a grand jury and that there's a plea negotiation for prison time for Mr. Price or home confinement for Mr. Price. I don't know. How confident are you about all of this? Am I a general public commenter, or do I have one more minute?
You're still on the items if you'd like.
Okay, great. Thank you. Going back, so we're talking about the budget and the veto and stuff like that. Trying to find out why Denise Verrett at the LA Zoo didn't disclose millions of dollars that are available to the zoo that she transferred to other organizations outside of the city, including some that she is the executive director of. So why don't we have the whole redo of that part of the budget for the zoo to find out why she didn't disclose millions of dollars that are being transferred to other organizations she sits on? Because, you know, that's kind of a conflict of interest. It's kind of embezzlement, depending on who benefited from it. We know that she did, because she relied on the Aquarium and Zoo Association to transfer the elephants to Tulsa. Okay, DanielGust.substack.com. Mr. Harris Dawson, I filed a $3 million civil rights claim against the city for things you have been doing here lately. You want to talk about a lawsuit? We're gonna find out what's been going on. So the City Attorney's Office is now vetting my $3 million civil rights lawsuit, a claim against the city preceding a lawsuit. On DanielGust.substack.com, I'm trying to find out why Mayor Bass is now having an emergency meeting only after the terrorist anti-Semitic attack in Boulder, Colorado. Didn't Brian K. Williams' home being raided in December? Didn't that warrant an emergency meeting? On DanielGust.substack.com, I call it the risky political abacus of Mayor Karen Bass, because you should have had an emergency reading. I'm telling you, LA Live is not the only soft spot for a terror-
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Just general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
All right, General Dogon, shut it down, organizer with LA Can. And I'm here with other members of our Human and Civil Rights Committee. We've been here before, support of the former Skid Row Housing Trust tenants, right, in addressing the conditions in their building. And we're here again today. And we're here today with a letter, right, and we ask this council to meet the demands of those letters. And we're gonna be back again and again and again. Today, we're here with about 12, 15 people. Next, we're gonna be here with 50, 100, and the whole Skid Row until these conditions are met. It ain't gonna stop, so we might as well just start right now fixing these conditions in these buildings so we all can get a good night's sleep. All power.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General comment and all items, please.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Daniel Sosa. I am a cannabis operator here in Los Angeles. Our industry is in a crisis right now. Dispensaries in Los Angeles owe $280 million in back taxes to the city. And additionally, another billion dollars in back taxes to the state. So clearly, we're having some financial trouble here. I would like to, meanwhile, in Los Angeles, illegal dispensaries are running rampant. There are 4,000 of them and 300 of us, 400 of us, and we're trying to compete against them while paying 10% tax. So I would really like to ask you guys to put a measure to the voters to lower the tax rate so that it is more in line with where alcohol and cannabis are taxed in the city.
Hold this time for a second. So Speaker-
Which is less than 1%.
Hold on, Speaker.
Yes.
So you requested all items. You've used a minute. That's for item 18, which is on the budget generally. But I do not see any other cannabis-related items on the agenda. You're welcome to continue speaking about this during general if you'd like, but are there any other items on the agenda that you'd like to speak to? If not, I'm gonna move you to general.
I could sing it in a foreign language, but no, it's okay. I appreciate you guys. Please put it to the voters. We need lower taxes. Thank you, guys.
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
I just want to do public, yeah.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
All right. So hello, all council members. My name is Amber Dinesh Kumar. I'm currently a freshman attending Granada Hills Charter High School. I'd like to start off by thanking Councilmember Lee. Oh, there's Mr. Lee. Okay. So I'd like to thank Councilmember Lee for his LEED 12 program has taught me about what's happening in my community and has also opened a lot of opportunities for me. The LEED 12 program has shown me how vital public service to communities. Public service is more important now than ever because it addresses critical societal needs from infrastructure to public health and ensures the well-being and safety of communities. And you, councilmember, and you, councilmembers, make that possible. So thank you. But I'd like to talk about how I feel like there needs to be more extracurricular opportunities, such as like research programs, because I want to pursue a STEM-related job, such as like working in Google as like a programmer, and to go to colleges that provide like better opportunities. You need like research programs. And so far, I haven't been able to like find any research programs.
Speaker, I'm gonna pause right there. So your time has expired on general public comment, which is what you requested. So we have to move on to the next speaker.
All right, that's all right. Okay, thank you.
And the reason for that is, so we do need, we apply the rules equally to everybody. So again, I know that the time goes by rather quickly, especially if you're only speaking on general. So if you'd like, you can always provide additional public comment in writing at lacouncilcomment.com. Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, Clyde. General comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
I'm here in support of the letter, "No Mail, No Safety, No Dignity," produced by the LA Can community for Isabel Geraldo's District 14. We are demanding action on two fronts: immediate onsite lawful mail delivery for 15 occupied buildings, no more excuses; restoration of 24/7 security, not armed thugs and intimidation; but real tenant protective presence across the HLA portfolio. I repeat, that's immediate onsite lawful mail delivery for AI 15 occupied buildings. No more excuses. Punctuated with "no more excuses." Seven seconds to wrap it up. That is perfectly timed. Thank you.
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, I'm Angela Birdsong, and I'll be speaking general comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. I am a housing rights organizer for Los Angeles Community Action Network, better known as LA Can. I work in Council District 14, and I reside in the City of Inglewood, a close neighbor of City of Los Angeles. And I am a landlord in Hermosa Beach. To Hope for an Affordable LA, Los Angeles Housing Department, Mayor Bass, City Council members, and all those charged with protecting tenants, I'm here today in support of tenants from the 17 buildings recently purchased by Hope for an Affordable Los Angeles to submit a letter regarding conditions in the building. Tenants have told me directly they're not receiving mail, missing appointments. Security has been pulled. Doors aren't locked. People have been abused. No mail, no safety, no dignity. Our demands are immediate onsite lawful mail delivery for all 15 buildings, restoration of 24 security, not armed thugs, not intimidation, but real tenant protective presence across the HLA portfolio.
All right, we're gonna close public comment at this time. That meets our obligation for this meeting. I'll ask anybody to not, we said we're gonna balance the, we're gonna go through the list. Anybody who speaks out again, this is your first warning. Your second warning will result in your removal from this meeting. Mr. City Attorney.
And Mr. President, I believe that was Mr. Smith who was yelling out during your instructions.
Yes. L.A. hat, green, Army Green, L.A. Dodgers hat, interlocking L and A. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 1 through 3, 12, 14 through 17, 19 and 20, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. President, there's a request to send items 1, 15 and 16 forthwith, sir.
Without objection, that'll be the order. All right, what's next?
Next would be item number 13, and that was called special by Councilmember Geraldo for a separate vote.
All right, Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to request that item 19 go forthwith.
All right, without objection. That'll be the order. Madam Clerk, can you restate the item that's before us?
Yes, sir. Item 13 is before council, and that was called special by Councilmember Geraldo for a separate vote, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on 13. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
All right, what's next? Councilmember Rahman? Councilmember Rahman would like to be recorded as a no vote. If you could say that into the mic so that the record can capture you indicating such.
I was trying to press my button for a no on that, but it didn't register. So it may be recorded as a no vote.
Okay.
And then for the record, the final vote for item 13 is 10 ayes and 4 noes, sir.
Okay. What's next?
Next would be item 21, and that was called special by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, I wanted to invite the nominee up for questions. Good morning, Ms. Laris.
Good morning. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. I just had a question. Obviously, Lhasa has been at the forefront of a lot of news recently, and I just wanted to inquire as to your familiarity with the current circumstances of what's happening at Lhasa.
Yes. Good morning, council members. Good morning, President. Especially a good morning to Councilmember Rodriguez, and thank you for the invitation to come to speak today. I've been working in the housing authority world, in affordable housing world, for 26 years. The last 16 years, I've been working and collaborating with Lhasa on various initiatives for both the county and the City of Los Angeles. I worked about 19 years for the County Housing Authority, and I've been six years with the City of LA Housing Authority as well as the Chief Programs Officer. I have the responsibility of overseeing the federal programs, public housing, and the multiple Section 8 programs, which are the second-largest programs in the country, as you know that very well. I have a track record of managing, administrating very large operations very successfully and fully compliant. So I'm very familiar with the recent assessments and audits that have been done with Lhasa. And I do believe that my experience with transforming organizations, reshaping organizations, will be valuable as a Lhasa Commissioner.
So given your history and intersectionality with your professional role and now kind of coming into this, being nominated for this commission appointment, where do you identify your primary area of focus being? And what have you identified as being some of the primary concerns that need to be addressed?
Right. Part of my assessment will be looking at systems. I feel that Lhasa grew very quickly. Circumstances pushed a lot of initiatives as well as funding to the agency without having systems in place, financial systems, monitoring systems, internal controls. I believe that I will be contributing to that. I have a lot of emphasis on people. I have 16 years in human resources experience in addition to managing large teams. I do see that there is a lot of commitment from the operational staff that just require some leadership and some tools to do their job a lot better.
Are you familiar at all with some of the efforts around the homeless count and even some of the technology that has been deployed on the homeless count that was not operable at the time of the homeless count? And yet, it seems that there's continued commitment by Lhasa to sustain a contract with the same contractor even though those issues have not been corrected?
Yes, I am familiar of some of the discrepancies.
Can you pull that down? I can't. I'm sorry, sorry. I don't know. I think I hear some backtalk back here, so that might be part of it.
Is that better? I am aware of discrepancies with the system and the contractor that's been used. Systems are as good as the information that you put in. And systems do have to be audited, and data needs to be scrubbed before any report out is made. So I would like an opportunity to evaluate that contractor and look at other opportunities that might be available.
So just so you understand, it was just, because I agree 1,000% with you. It is, you know, the data that comes out is only as good as the data that goes in. However, the problem was is that the app wasn't even functioning. So there's all kinds of money being spent to sustain this contractor in this app, and yet the app was not functional on the evenings that volunteers were being deployed for that homeless count. So that appears to be one of the biggest challenges. Given the significant amount of funding that the county has retracted from Lhasa's budget and the ongoing efforts to reform the homelessness system, how would you envision Lhasa's interaction with the Housing Department's new Bureau of Homeless Oversight that is supposed to help support the coordinated and regional approach?
You know, if it's not happening already with the current members of the Lhasa Commission, my first request is to conduct an assessment of that first and foremost. I'm aware that the decision has already been made. The county has already made its plans. It's underway to creating their own department as well. And our main initiative of the commission now is to understand the impact of that and how Lhasa will continue to operate with, you know, a reduction of 45% of the funds as well. My role is to prepare Lhasa for whatever is next, right? Reshape it, address any changes that need to be put in place. I've done that in other organizations. When I was at the County Housing Authority, I was moved from Human Resources to direct the operations of the Section 8 Department- the operations of the Section 8 Department that was in a failed status and troubled status for noncompliance. It does require a lot of investment in understanding what went wrong, but also with the reduction and funding, what is feasible for the agency going forward. I think that's really important, to understand what will be their capacity. They play a very vital role in our continuum, and I do believe that they can continue to do so, but in a very feasible and with, obviously within reasonable expectations.
Right. And I think, just to underscore what is really important, and again, going back to how we derive or... LSA is the keeper of all the data, of knowing what rooms are available, what rooms are placement, and there's been suggestion that there was withholding of information. So even if we stand up this new reporting bureau, if LSA isn't cooperatively providing data to the city of Los Angeles so that we can determine how we better program resources, then it defeats the purpose of why are we having this agency conduct this role? And so, again, I think it goes back to, you know, in terms of the data chain, what we act upon is really based on what LSA provides, and there hasn't been, I think the CAO even testified, that there hasn't been free forthcoming information from LSA that even the CAO has requested, and that is really problematic. So I suggest to you that what I really think is going to be important in this role is to making sure there is greater transparency about the work that is being conducted, and that that information is being transmitted to the city of Los Angeles. Because it doesn't matter if it's the CAO, if it's a new housing bureau, if we're not being given the data, then it really doesn't matter who it's being reported to, if it's being withheld. And so, I suggest very strongly that as you, you know, as you're confirmed and you go into this work, it will remain incredibly critical for you to be that voice to ensuring that the data is forthcoming, that when there are reports that are given, whether it's to this council or to frankly, any city, anybody... Right. That it's actually on paper and validated and verified. Because there were many times that I would sit on committee and I would get verbal reports where it was, you know, "We'll get back to you." I literally had to go back and listen to audio tapes of what was communicated to me in a previous meeting and compare it to what I was being told at the next meeting. There was never an accounting and an honest, real-time communication that could be verified. And so, I would suggest that, you know, you're going into, obviously, a very tumultuous time with a lot of moving parts, still unclear what Measure A and that body of work is going to, how it intersects with us as a city. But we have already seen very clearly what some of the blatant problems are. And I appreciate the fact that you're coming in with a history, having worked for, you know, worked for an agency that has intersected with LSA. So that should give you some real insight as to perhaps where the problems have lied. However, knowing where the problems are are only half the battle. It's what are you going to do to correct it and lead that correction? Because, you know, even as a council, as we have requested and demanded and, you know, at times withheld resources pending that information coming, it hasn't really changed.
Correct. I'm in agreement with you, absolutely. The Housing Authority, on a monthly basis, provides a huge data file to LSA with a lot of detail about applicants and detail about even where people have moved into and their status. That information, I am not certain what is done with it month after month as well.
I'm sorry, you're saying the Hackla information that is transmitted to LSA, your concern is that they're not fully utilizing the data? Got it. Okay. All right. Well, Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, your willingness to take on this beast and serve in this role, and I wish you, I wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rahman, hold tight.
I probably didn't need to speak, but I did want to share for everyone else on the body that the appointment of Margarita Laris to the LSA Commission was waived out of our committee because we wanted to make sure that Los Angeles had full representation on the LSA Commission. And I think for many of you who have engaged with Hackla, we've had the privilege of working with Ms. Laris on a number of initiatives. I've found her, in my experience, to be a very knowledgeable and hardworking partner to improve conditions for some of our lowest-income residents in this city. And I look forward to working with her and having her expertise on the commission, because Hackla is a big piece of our broader homeless response system. And the relationship between LSA and Hackla actually will help us to house more people more effectively than we have been in the past. So I'm excited about the potential for bringing these two entities more closely aligned in their goals and in the kind of ways in which they're sharing information and data, and look forward to Ms. Laris being confirmed today, and I hope that she has all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
President, if I'm allowed a few more minutes, I'd like to share that I was born in Los Angeles. I've always worked and studied within 20 miles of the place that I was born. I'm very proud to be the child of immigrants. I'm very proud to be raising my children in our community. I have three young adult children with me here today that have inspired me and motivated to continue this work. I really started my public service at the age of 14 as a summer youth worker, working in our public housing property, giving out applications and answering questions. At a very age of 14, I was a translator for most of our residents and applicants as well. I can thank my parents for giving me two languages to do that. I am doing this job, as you all know, it's a voluntary position in addition to my regular work, because I do believe that we can and will do better. We owe it to our communities, especially to the children, to provide a decent, safe and sanitary place to live. It is our right, and it's our obligation as leaders of this city and this community to do so. So if you want me, I will take on this journey with everyone as well, and to continue the mission that I started at the age of 14. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you, members, for engaging in this discussion. And we're going to take a vote right now that answers the question that you put on the table. All right, let's open the rolls on this question, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, there is a request to send Item 21 forthwith, sir.
Without objection, that'll be the order. What's next?
Next would be Item Number 5, and that was called special by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the CAO's office to please come up.
For the record, Mr. Price has recused on this item, Number 5. So he's off the board and out of the room.
Come on, Ed.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. So in your report, it identifies that we're not using, if I understand correctly, we're not using any general fund dollars to cover this early addition of the increased bed rates for this purpose. Because originally, I know we had, you know, just to recap, the original proposal was the new rates would go into effect July 1, then it was subsequently adopted to bump it up sooner for January 1, pending the CAO's office finding the resources. So my understanding is you found these resources through unused HAP dollars, correct?
Ed Gibson with the CAO's office. So I'll provide a little clarity. There is a portion of the portfolio, particularly for interim housing, that has been general-funded already. And so, if it's general-funded already, it would not have been eligible for HAP, so you see a portion of that. Everything else that was in there is funded by HAP, and so we have, of course, expenditure deadlines for HAP. Perhaps like HAP 1 has to be expended by the end of June. And so, we went through all the accounts to see where folks had not expended their HAP, where there was a balance still sitting there that was eligible. And so, there's quite a few lines in there, as you may note. Us moving that money to cover the gap that was created by increasing the rate to $80 million, I mean, by increasing it to $80, just $80, let me make that clear, going forward. So there is a portion that is general fund, because it was before, and you can't go back to HAP. As we go forward, we will still continue to have challenges because the costs associated, particularly with the interim housing, will exceed the HAP dollars that we have, so we will have to use other sources of money. But long as you continue to use HAP on HAP and don't go to general fund, you're okay. Once you go to general fund, you can never go back to HAP.
Got it. So then by doing so, by obligating HAP dollars, as you indicated, if we go HAP to HAP to sustain it, then we're fine, but once we go into general fund, then you can't go, you can't flip-flop on the use.
That is correct.
That being said, by obligating HAP funds, do we then inhibit our ability? HAP is primarily the source of how we stand up new beds, correct?
It is one of the methods, absolutely.
Okay. So if we're now taking that for the services delivery side, are we then inhibiting our ability for standing up new beds or having at least the resources that would have been available for standing up new beds that we, as we know, are desperate to meet with respect to the alliance agreement?
And I think that is the balance of the trade. So we have set up so many beds that most of our HAP dollars are expended on services as it is now, and so...
I'm sorry, most of our HAP dollars are spent on services?
Yeah, services tied to interim housing and teams and other things of that nature. So most of those dollars are already expended. As we increase the rate, January 1 of this year, and then once again in July, it will fully take all the HAP dollars we have just to cover those rate increases, plus the other items that are covered by HAP that are services or sometimes salaries inside the budget. So it will, it doesn't, it's been inhibiting us from doing new projects, because then you build it and then you have to service it. So it's a double, a double hit. So the need for additional funding is unequivocally needed to expand.
So, okay, that's obviously concerning, that, because what we, yes, we need the services, but when we've obligated ourselves to pay more for services, thereby redacting the amount of money that we have to actually stand up the new beds that we need, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Because HAP dollars have primarily been so much of what we relied on from the state to be able to stand up those new beds. And, okay, so do we have any, I haven't followed this, but what is the, do we have an idea or projected outlook, given the state's financial circumstances, about what HAP dollars are going to look like in the future fiscal year?
Yeah, I apologize not having the exact dollar amount in my head, but HAP 6 is due the application, which is a joint application with the county and all the other cities inside the county come to a joint application. But that funding for HAP 6 is less than this year's funding. I want to say, are we, is it down to 133, less te, 143? Thank you, I do that every time. So we're down to 143, so...
143 from?
143 from 164.
Okay. So then what does that realistically look like if the majority of that is used for services, in terms of our ability to potentially stand up new beds?
For using HAP, you're limited, but for HAP 4 and 5, I just wanted to note that HAP 4 and 5 did not allow, without special state permission, to use it for capital at all. HAP 6 will allow you to use it for capital once again, but of course, it's less money overall, thus creating a new challenge.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I remain concerned about, and I appreciate you explaining that, I remain concerned about our ability to be able, particularly when we're having conversations around making sure that we're standing up new beds that are compliant with the alliance, this, again, we're going to be siphoning off the resources that would allow us to do more of that work for services that unfortunately oftentimes we can't always get confirmation of are being delivered in occupied rooms. So, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We'll open the roll on Item Number 5, and thank you all for your coming to the table this morning. We'll open the roll on Item Number 5, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 1 no.
All right, what's next? Councilmember Rahman.
I would like to request that Item 5 be moved forthwith.
Absolutely. Without objection, that'll be the order. What's next?
Council has motion for posting referral.
They are posted and referred, announcements members. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, colleagues. So I wanted to take a moment to thank our Foothill Division officers and the Pacoima community for their ongoing commitment to keeping our neighborhoods safe and cared for. Last week, we unfortunately had a copycat incident, too, that was, that occurred in Ms. Jurado's district with the cutting down of trees along Van Nuys Boulevard with a chainsaw. I want to remind you, in my district, where my team and community members, you know, we work very hard to protect and grow our tree canopy, because we are an uncanopied area. In fact, you know, the heat index and so much of the environmental impacts borne out of the lack of tree canopy are very real and have very real health implications for members of my community. So to have an individual engage in a copycat event that takes what limited maturing tree canopy that we have only adds to the greater complications and setbacks for our community that are exponentially felt along some of our major corridors. And so, you know, I want to thank Detective Larkin, the night watch team, and the support of our local residents. Officers used surveillance footage to identify the suspect, track him down, and take him into custody without incident. The suspect is now facing felony vandalism charges, and I want to thank the officers that worked on this case, and of course, members of our community that stepped up, provided that critical footage that helped us to apprehend that suspect. And it's a reminder of how our community is equally as important to the public safety efforts that we have in each of our neighborhoods, because LAPD can't do it alone, and they certainly can't do it without the help and support of residents coming forward to provide that critical information that led to the apprehension of the suspect. So thank you, Foothill Division.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rodriguez, and thank you to those officers and community members who participated in that effort to have accountability and consequences for taking trees from all of us. When you cut down a tree, that tree benefits literally everybody in our space, so it's a super important thing and a crime against us all. Any other announcements, members? All right, seeing none, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions and ask if there are adjourning motions on the west side, to my left, and on the right side. All right, seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.